Yeah.
Good evening, welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting tonight. Today is August 5th, 2025. Right now it's 7:08. Sorry we're a little bit late because we need to host the opening and then we have run over here. And sorry about my dress, okay? Because I have to go back to dance with my residents, so otherwise I'll be in trouble. Okay, they might recall me again. Okay, so anyway, and any person wish to address the city council during the oral communication must complete a speaker card that is provided at entry to the council chamber and submit the card to the Assistant City Clerk prior to the commencement of oral communication. Do we have an Assistant City Clerk? If not, then City Manager, you will pretend you are City Clerk, okay? Prior to all commencement for oral communication, speaker card will not be accepted after oral communication has started. Tonight invocation will be led by the Pastor Samuel Martinez. Pastor, okay, thank you so for coming in such a, okay, on the busy day. And the Councilwoman Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rights please.
Thank you Mayor, let us pray. Heavenly Father, remembering the words of King Solomon, of all that wisdom is a principal thing, we pray for your wisdom to be given to our mayor and city council, plus all that are in leadership in our city. We remember that the Holy Scriptures state that if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God and you will give liberally. Proverbs 3:5 states to acknowledge you in all our ways and you will direct our path. We acknowledge you in all that will be discussed tonight concerning our city affairs and thank you for your direction. Protect our police officers in our city and all the sons and daughters of West Covina and the military. Protect our schools that they may stay safe havens. May our neighborhoods continue to be saved to live in and we be able to walk our streets, prosper our businesses, comfort our residents that are lonely, depressed, the widows, the widowers, all that may be experiencing any sort of crisis tonight or have experienced any kind of loss recently. Peace be within your borders, West Covina, and success in all your areas. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. Lift up his favor and blessings upon you and grant you his shalom peace. God bless America and God bless our beloved city of West Covina. Amen.
Amen.
Gentlemen, please remove your caps and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat please. Assistant City Manager, work call please.
Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Vado.
She's out.
The record reflect, she's absent. Mayor Wu.
Yep.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and City Attorney, do you have anything? We have no close action, yeah, because we have party going on right now. Okay, and we have no presentation because we want to make sure we can have a show and sweep and council meeting so we can go out, okay, to join our community for National Night Out. Tonight is a National Night Out and plus touch a truck, and you can see a lot of people. And this is the first year we've combined and all the, okay, and the neighborhood watch together is centralized and hopefully we can outreach more people. And for past 10 years, I remember we always have to fight the traffic to go to each of the neighborhood watch and end up, we're missing a lot of time due to the traffic. So, and the police decided, Police Department decided to do a centralized like any other city and supposedly we should skip our meeting tonight, but because you, you, okay, we have to have the meeting together for tonight for you and to go through a very important agenda because timing matters, so that's why we have to be here. And so we go to the oral communication, okay, and the readers, please bear with me. Okay, comment are limited for three minutes per speaker unless modified by the Presiding Officer of the City Council, request to speak and agenda item will be heard prior to request to speak on non-agenda items. Member of the public may not engage in behavioral acts that disrupted to the orderly conduct of the meeting, including but not limited to speak off topic, speaking beyond the speakers' allowed time limit, making slanderous or profan remarks or using loud, threatening or abusive language which disrupt, disturb, impede and render invisible the orderly conduct of the meeting. Member of public may not threaten any person with physical harm or act in a manner that may reasonable be interpreted as an imminent threat of physical harm. When you hear your name being called, you may sit in the front row designated for public speaker. The time will start when your name is called. And how many speaker we have?
Mayor, we would like to collect the speaker card, so if you have a speaker card that is filled out and your intent is to speak tonight, we ask that you please approach so that we can collect them, thank you.
Okay.
Just a few moments.
Go ahead, okay, and okay, and I have a first speaker. A first speaker please. How many speaker we have?
Three, four, five, six, seven speakers, Mayor.
Seven?
Seven speakers, Mayor.
First speaker please.
First speaker will be Oscar Morales.
Oscar.
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers.
Hi.
My name is Oscar Morales. I've been a proud resident of West Covina for over 20 years and just last November I became a homeowner in this city, a place I've long called home. It's not easy for me to come here today, but I feel it's necessary to speak about an ongoing and deeply troubling situation involving my neighbor, Colleen Rosati, who I understand is currently serving as a city's elected treasurer. For the past six months, my family and I have felt continuously targeted and harassed by Ms. Rosati. Shortly after moving in, she reported us to the city regarding our garage. Code enforcement officer Tom Stapleton inspected the property and I complied with all requirements. Permits were pulled and final inspections were completed. However, a month later, Mr. Stapleton contacted me again, asking about unrelated work concerning our electrical panel and window removal, work that did not involve the panel at all. This led to further city correspondence, which I believe was again prompted by Ms. Rosati. It feels like we are being unfairly scrutinized and singled out. But more disturbing than the code enforcement issue is what happened on April 20th, 2025, Easter Sunday, and also my daughter's birthday. We had family and friends over to celebrate as some of our guests walked along the public grass in front of Ms. Rosati's home, she came outside, confronted them aggressively and used offensive and racist language, telling them to get off her property. And I say this all with all due respect to the council, but I feel it's important to be transparent. She said, "Oh, you effing Mexicans feel so entitled." This behavior is unacceptable from anyone, but especially from an elected official who represents our city. It crosses a line from neighborly dispute to targeted harassment and discrimination. My family and I deserve to feel safe and welcome in our own neighborhood and right now we do not. I am here today to respectfully ask the council for support in addressing this matter. I'm not looking for special treatment. I just want to live peacefully in my home without being racially targeted or harassed by someone who holds a position of public trust. If you have any questions for me, please feel free to contact me. I left my number on the speaker card. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Oscar. And next speaker please.
Next speaker is Mike Meredith, followed by Giselle Moran, Moran, and followed by Mark Andrews.
Mike.
Good evening Mayor and Council. My family's lived in West Covina since 1954 and similar to the gentleman here, feeling a little singled out by code enforcement and safety. We've, in the last year, we've had about six different episodes, one of them being we're donating about six bags, trash bags, to the rescue mission for pickup. We set them out on our, we have a big, like a handicap ramp out in front of our porch for the pickup that morning and code enforcement gave us a sighting. It gave us a warning, it wasn't a ticket. We had another situation where a truck was parked in the driveway because, and it was in our back driveway prior to this, the same day I put it in the front driveway. And that one had some spider webs on the tire. We got warnings on that. This is all in the last year, we've been getting all these different warnings and stuff. There was a few different situations with street sweepers. Big issue right now where we're fortunate, we're right across the street from Walnut Grove School. So we got permission from Walnut Grove to park in their parking lot, which is already limited, but because of their parking for teachers, they said it's okay, it's only for a short time. So we moved the cars, or one car, across the street, so did a couple of our neighbors and they also parked over there. Street sweeper came by and we got along ring camera, I've got pictures of it on my phone, I've got the ring camera, I can show anybody here tonight. The street sweeper went by, did our whole entire circle and then three of our other neighbors went and got our cars, put it back. An hour later, the street sweeper came by again. And on the second time, he had a code enforcement truck with him and that person put all these warning stickers. Now, I've talked into another code enforcement on this last Monday and she said, "Come here and bring this to your attention." So that's what I'm doing here tonight. This isn't the only episode with street sweepers, there's all kinds of other things. We've had a yard sale and we had a 10-foot by 10-foot canopy, half in our back driveway and half on the sidewalk. Code enforcement came by and wanted to give us, had us break it down. Clearly says estate sale, yard sale. He didn't even know what a yard or estate sale is. He thought we were selling food. I don't know where they're getting these guys, but you know, maybe they're hiring them at Home Depot parking lot, I don't know. But a little bit of a common respect coming from code enforcement would be, would be nice, you know. Is there anything else I'm missing here, babe? Oh, my time's up anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
And Oscar, can you give your contact information to our Acting City Manager, please? And send it to you, Mike, would you please? Yes. You got it, okay, so we can, we can contact you, okay, and try to resolve the issue. Yeah. Our next speaker please. Thank you, Mike.
Next speaker is Giselle Moran.
Hello, good evening Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am here to speak on these street sweeping near my house. I've seen that recently, it's for Mondays from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And I do actually work for In-N-Out in Baldwin Park, so our schedules are kind of crazy to where I do close a lot, so I get off work at 2:00 in the morning. So it sucks when I have to close on Sunday night, park by Floor and Decor six blocks away from my house, knowing that Monday morning they're gonna give me a ticket. So now I have to either have my dad pick me up at 2:30 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, or am I supposed to like walk? Thankfully I haven't had to walk yet, but I don't want that to have to happen. I do have a lot of friends that I also work with that either work at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM and having to walk six blocks away to get to their car to have to then go to work. My neighbor parks on his lawn because they don't have enough room to park on the street. There's been instances where I've seen up to two cars on their grass and I just feel like as these people owning their homes and they just don't, they don't need that. I have friends who live in La Puente, City of Industry, who have street sweeping on one side on Mondays, another side on Tuesday. I don't see how that could, you know, they say they've been working fine. It's giving the residents, you know, their opportunities to park. Now, if they don't find parking at them, then that's, you know, that's their fault, but you're giving them the opportunity. Here, I wake up on Monday morning and it's ghost town and there's no cars, there's nowhere. Now, we're having to migrate over to these other streets where there's also residents and now the Floor and Decor parking lot is gonna get covered. It's just a lot of like, it's just, I feel like a domino effect in the streets. It's also prone to more residents getting tickets and citations when they, they don't need to worry about that. If you give them the opportunity to just park across the street on one day, park across the, like, it's, I think that would be pretty reasonable. Yeah, that's kind of my main thing, a lot of, I am on like this neighborhood app and I do see it come across a lot on my page. I don't like to speak on it, but just to see that there is a lot of people thinking about it and it is a problem, I would just love for it to be, you know, a thought.
Thank you so much, okay? You got an extra time because you forgot to put the time, so.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. Okay, and we don't want you walk six block at 2:00 in the morning, okay? So, City Manager, okay, can you get her in, the contact information, okay, and the address so we can see how can we improve it? Okay, yeah. Okay, and next speaker please.
Next speaker is Mark Andrews.
Mark.
Hello, City Council, good evening. My name is Mark Andrews and I'm a resident of West Covina. I'm here to speak to you guys about ordinance 22193, which is restricts parking every Tuesday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for street sweeping. While I understand the intent of this ordinance, it presents a serious problem for not only me, but many of my neighbors. We have no driveway, no, we cannot park in the alley, we can't park on our lawn, so it creates a big problem for us. So we have nowhere to park during those restricted hours. So this ordinance assumes that everyone had the parking space and it's not a reality for many of us and since nearby streets have the same restrictions, we can't just go to the next street. So we're trying not to avoid this compliance, but as written, it makes, this is impossible for us. So I asked Council that if you guys could hold off citations and maybe consider alternatives like permit exemptions or rotating schedules for the different streets. That way residents like me and my family and neighbors, we aren't unfairly penalized. So I assume it was gonna be already figured out, but we just got a new notice last week. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you give your contact information, address? You did, right? And we are, we still fine tune it, we try to improve all the situation, try to less impact to our resident. So, and our City Manager, we're a sweeper, a sign company, we'll try to work on it, okay?
I think we're down to like a week or two before they start issuing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you. And next speaker please.
Your next speaker is Crystal Chumney with Josh Murray from the West Covina Library, followed by Anna Ruiz, followed by Steve Moran.
Oh, the new character. Welcome to West Covina.
Good evening Mayor Wu, esteemed Councilmembers and city staff. My name is Crystal Chumney. I am a regional administrator with LA County Library. It is my pleasure to share with you that we have made a permanent appointment of a new community library manager for West Covina Library, Josh Murray.
Welcome.
Thank you. Josh has been with LA County Library for 18 years and for the past five years, he has been the community library manager for Manhattan Beach Library. Josh brings a wealth of leadership experience, dedication and passion to this role. I know he will work hard to continue providing excellent library service and partnership to the residents and city of West Covina. I hope you will join me, as you already did, in welcoming Josh to the community. I would also like to share that West Covina Library will be closed to the public from Saturday, August 16th through Wednesday, August 20th for some flooring replacement. The library will open to the public at 10:00 AM on Thursday, August 21st. So I will now turn it over to Josh, who will share about some upcoming library programs and services.
Good evening Mayor and members of the council. I just started at West Covina Library today and so far, everyone I've met has been so welcoming and very, I'm super excited to be part of the community. While I'm here, I'd like to invite everyone to the second Saturday book sale this upcoming Saturday, August 9th, from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Join us as our friends of the West Covina Library hold their second Saturday book sale. The FOL will be selling a wide selection of children's teen, adult and foreign language books, as well as DVDs, books on CD and music CDs. And then I'd also like to invite the teens of the community to attend the Teen Ice Cream Social on Wednesday, August 13th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. Teens will enjoy ice cream sundaes and play various games from Apples to Apples, Jenga, Pictionary and more. And I know that if I was a teen, I would be attending that event. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Josh.
Thank you.
So we're gonna see you every meeting, right?
Correct.
You'll become our regular. Next speaker please.
Next speaker is Anna Ruiz.
Anna.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Anna Ruiz. I've been a homeowner of this great city for 35 years and for 35 years, there's only, I'm gonna echo the sweep cleaning, hopefully I'm the last one, but for 35 years, there's only been sweep cleaning on one side of the street. All of a sudden, they added the other side on the same day and the same times. Obviously, it's difficult. So I'm referring to Santos, close to Friendship Park, so Santos Avenue between La Puente and Valle, Leaven Glen Drive. So we're limited to one little street residential and we have two townhomes in the community. I live in one of the townhomes, I'm a board member there, which is La Puente Townhome. So we will hope that you will have consideration for rotating schedule as the other resident mentioned, some of us work evenings or mornings, so you know, it's kind of difficult to rotate or not have enough parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And Acting City Manager, do you have Anna information? You have all the address, everything, okay? And any other speaker?
You have one more speaker, Steve Moran.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I am here to echo all the other sentiments, which not everybody wants, right? But we have.
No problem.
You know, the more people that I think get involved and, you know, I was here when we were talking about the hospital that was gonna be built, it was a great session and it was long, but it was great. A lot of, I think a good thing got done. But as far as the street sweeping, yeah, I think a lot of people in the city are kind of asking around the same thing. They're not asking to get rid of it, they're just asking for, you know, proper accommodations, maybe, you know, something that's reasonable, right? And plenty of other cities do it and that might mean redrawing the lines a little bit of what the schedule would be to make it, you know, just something that reasonable that everybody can do. And I think I'm just gonna repeat that same sentiment because, yeah, in my neighborhood, I have seen cars on grass, which is a citation as well, but it's just not a good look for our city. I don't not want, you know, people from other parts of the city driving, seeing cars on law, so that's not what we want here in West Covina. The same thing, I don't know when actual citations start because I know I did get, we did, I did get, we got warnings, you know, on some of the vehicles and, but there isn't an exact date on that. If you guys will consider, or if there's something that can be done about the days, can we, maybe, is it, can there possibly be a special meeting to let us know what's going on, if that's gonna happen or not? I would like to, you know, have that and maybe notification so, you know, we can come and get a follow-up on what's going on with that. So the special meeting about it, when that's gonna happen? My daughter, that was my daughter that was speaking earlier, so she pretty much took all my points. For me to stay here any longer than I need to. And then to touch on the code enforcement that the gentleman was talking about, that's also been kind of an issue. I've had the same run-in with the same person like three different times. Everything's been square, everything's been fine, I took care of it with the city. I've lived, we've lived here 19 years with me and my family. I grew up in West Covina since I was five years old, you know, before I moved out and came back. Never had a problem with code enforcement, city permits, and we've done, there's been plenty of work done everywhere. It just seems like it's kind of excessive now, so I'm not sure what's going on and I'm not pointing fingers or blaming anybody, but it's getting a little, you know.
Too much.
Comfortable because you see them pass by and go slow, Monday through Friday, Saturdays and Sundays. Which general, I don't know why they're working on Sundays, but they are, if that's a protection issue, so be it, it's just a little excessive on that. And that's my time, thank you guys.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. And any other speaker? Do you have a contact information to the, would you please? And your, your address, your area, so we will look into it. Okay, and any other speaker?
There are no more speakers, Mayor.
Very good, okay, a good speech and thank you so much for the input. And, okay, Acting City Manager, maybe you should respond to all the concern regarding all the issue. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morales, Mr. Meredith, and actually Mr. Moran as well, on the code enforcement issues, public safety issues, I'll have the public safety manager contact you to discuss that or I will give you a call. Okay.
We will contact you.
I have everybody's number, I will make contact with you. In many of these cases, staff is responding to complaints received by either passerby, residents, neighbors, different people reporting things. The, some of the violations that you've noted, they're usually called in on complaints, it's not a proactive approach. On the, seeing the public safety vehicles more often down your streets, driving slower up and down seven days a week, that's an intentional feature that we've implemented to enhance public safety in the city. We do have cases in some parts of Southern California where you've seen an increase in residential burglaries, those type things. So having a public safety vehicle driving up and down our residential streets on a regular basis is a deterrent for people that are coming into the city to looking to do no good. So that's why you're seeing those. For the various speakers that have spoke on the street sweeping issues and the signs, the city is well aware of that. We've received plenty of feedback from the community echoing your concerns. My plan is to come back to the council on August 19th with some considerations and seek direction from the council to address these issues. There will be no citations issued until a final resolution to what we're gonna do is presented to the community and then we'll start a time clock for maybe 30 days from that point to either make any changes to signs, routes, and also educate the community. So you wouldn't see any citations probably till the earliest would be October at this point, until we resolve some of these issues. And even when we do start having a public safety officer following the sweeper, the intent is just to get the streets swept. So once the sweeper and the enforcement officer pass, you can immediately re-park your vehicle. So it'd just be a matter of moving your car out of the way for a couple of minutes, let the sweeper pass, and then you can immediately re-park. And that's one of the, so we don't have to find another spot to park your car for four hours. But again, there's a variety of issues that have come up with and concerns regarding the posting of the signs and the street sweeping routes themselves. So we are looking at those, we will be addressing them and bringing it back to the council. Crystal, thank you for introducing Josh and the information about the library system. Welcome to the West Covina family. I'm glad to have you here and always welcome. And I believe that concludes my response tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Yep, thank you so much, Acting City Manager. I want to echo some of our Acting City Manager, okay, the speech basically is this, okay? And we try to keep our promise to give the city a safe and clean city, okay? And this is our, okay, and mission, okay? And this is a big project, we understand we're going to have a hiccup, okay? Because we're going to do this weekly. I remember I lived here since 1989, 1990, we have a weekly street sweeping and, but now, what we do to, okay, so many years ago, they have no budget, they cut down to, don't know when it happened, okay? So now it's weekly after the trash day, so hopefully, okay, we can make sure your neighborhood's clean, sanitation of what state and our city requires. And we know possible when we implement this, we have some hiccup, but we are trying to find tune it, okay? We want to improve it, so that's why we want to have your information. We go to see what this and that, and the Acting City Manager will talk to, okay, our sweeper and installer and the, and the bring back to us, how can we improve? Okay, we absolutely don't want the lady, okay? We know our city is very safe, but we don't want you walking six block, okay, at 2:00 AM in the morning, okay? And if you're my daughter, I won't allow you to do it, I will pick you up. So, so, yeah, I know, the father figure. So, so don't worry, we will try to find tune it. And thank you so much for coming, okay, and to share with us. A second thing, of public safety, and you saw it, okay? All the cars, public safety, we try to help the police, okay, and the patrol on the street to make sure, okay, breaking, reduce the breaking, reduce the burglary and keep ours community steals very safe. So I think this is not trying to harass anybody, I hope you can understand. So if you feel you have any unjust treatment, please notify the city or City Council, we will take care of your issue, absolutely. So don't worry, we are neighbors, we work together, we try to improve our community so that you understand, that's what we try to do, okay? Please be patient, we try to find tune it, we will make sure, okay, everything will be hopefully your satisfaction. Okay, thank you. And any City Councilmember? Councilmember Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yes, and just like Mayor Wu stated and our Acting City Manager Mylan stated, the city is not enforcing it at this time, it's a educational process, so I know you got that on your vehicles, but don't worry, there's some time before. So I know you got that on your vehicles, but don't worry, there's some time before citations will even start. And this council has made it clear that we want this issue resolved. And so city staff are working really diligently to create a plan. And just like Acting City Manager Mylan stated, he plans on bringing that plan to us so we could potentially do alternate scheduling or potentially, yeah, altering scheduling on our streets. So, thank you.
Ollie, you want to say something?
No.
Okay, 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 thank you so much, and I would, thank you so much for your input, and we will try to improve it. I really appreciate you showing up. And this is what the overall communication is about, you coming to share with your concern, and city try our best to resolve your concern. So that's how the community is about. Okay, and the City Manager reported, do you have anything to report?
In the interest of time, Mr. Mayor, no report for tonight.
Then we go to consent calendar, okay? And I will put number three about our new director. I want them to introduce themselves. And all the City Council, you guys okay with the rest? Okay, very good, thank you so much. Okay, beside the number three, okay, do we have, okay, approval for one, two, five, right?
Move the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, and we have a motion, we have a second, roll call, please.
Councilman Kantoz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado is absent.
Yes.
Mayor Wu.
Yes, aye, okay, and approve four zero.
Four zero, motion passes, Mayor.
And number three, the reason, we have a new promotion, a hire, and I want each of them maybe introduced to public, and then maybe our Acting City Manager, one by one.
Yes, I'll give a brief description here first, Mr. Mayor. The city of West Covina currently has vacancies for the positions of Finance Director, Human Resource and Risk Management Director, and Assistant City Manager. These executive roles are essential to the effective management and oversight of city operations. Recognizing the operational need to restore capacity at the executive level, I have conducted recruitment for each of these positions and is proposing the following appointments. Karen Ogawa as Finance Director at a salary of $17,400 a month. Carmen Lita Underwood, the position of Human Resources Risk Management Director at $14,153 a month. Naleesh Metta, the position of Assistant City Manager at $14,225 a month. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the proposed Finance Director for the city of West Covina, Karen Ogawa.
Welcome to West Covina, yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so very much for giving me this opportunity to introduce myself. So yes, my name is Karen Ogawa, and I have 37 years' experience working with local government, more specifically with municipalities. And with that, I have 33 years as serving as a Finance Director in Administrative Services. And I will assure you that I will do my utmost best to provide some type of added value and definitely be a collaborator with the city manager's executive team. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any other city member have any question? Okay.
Yes, I just wanna, okay, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I had an opportunity to speak to Karen and, and, you know, I also want to commend our city, Acting City Manager for selecting you as our Finance Director. You know, your years of service, from serving from the city of Walnut to Placentia to Rosemeat. I know your background in finance is gonna make a remarkable impact for the residents of West Covina. So always stay committed to them and work hard and making sure there's always, obviously, ethics and accountability in our finance department. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Any other City Council want to say anything? I'm numb, okay? Okay, welcome.
Glad you're here.
Say something?
Glad you're here.
Okay, okay. And we just want you to balance the budget, okay? Make sure the budget is balanced and make sure we have more income to come, and make sure we have more grant, okay? And make sure we have more service, and that is your duty, okay? And I want to say, welcome, welcome to West Covina. We have a high hope for you to help us to achieve our next level, okay? And make sure we have communication with the state, so we will persuade them that we are very healthy and that we just hired 10 police officers, we still balance the budget. So with your help, I think we can do even more. But thank you so much, okay? Acting City Manager, next.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next I'd like to introduce Carmen Lita Underwood to the position of Human Resources and Risk Management Director.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, city leadership, and community members. My name is Carmen Lita Underwood. I have 25 years of human resources experience, 10 years in risk management throughout Southern California, McClark County in Nevada. I would like to first express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve as the new Human Resources and Risk Manager for the city of West Covina. It's truly an honor to extend the, to be extended with this responsibility. I'm both humbled and excited in this step and within this new role. I want to thank our Acting City Manager, Mylan Menorinovich, and the City Council for their opportunity. I also wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks to the executive team and all of the staff that I'm working with. I want to also congratulate my fellow appointees. It will be a pleasure to continue to work, and I look forward to collaborating with you as well as the executive team. There is no further. Is there any questions for you?
Okay, Councilmember, anybody have a question? Again, I know you, again, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes, and I just wanted to say, a great job again, Acting City Manager Mylan, for selecting Carmen Lita Underwood. And I know your decade experience in HR, from working for Allen County Fire to working for Martin Luther King Hospital and working throughout the county of Los Angeles. I know your background in HR, and most especially, what impresses me most is your background in understanding the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so I commend you for knowing so much about that act, and great job, Mylan, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Any other City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to join with my colleagues in welcoming you in this role. You are such an incredible hard worker, and you put a lot of heart and soul into this, and it's just really exciting to get used, to get to see you in this new role. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
And, okay, and was Ariel Diaz?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and you know me, okay? I just say, make sure, okay, we don't have a lawsuit, okay? And risk management, okay, make sure that everybody behave, okay? And if somebody out of their line, you have to put a book on them, okay? So make sure, okay, we are safe, okay? We don't want to waste the money for all the lawsuit, all that kind of thing. And hire more people, we want to hire, okay? And you can see, we're very united, and West Covina is the perfect place to work. So hopefully, you can speed the process to let the qualified people to work for West Covina, especially the internship. We need those interns, our future, all our kids will come then to work for our future. So please remember, we have the number one internship program in any other city.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, thank you so much. Okay, Acting City Manager, next.
I'd like to introduce Naleesh Metta to the position of Assistant City Manager.
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents. I really appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry. So I've heard a lot of great things from Acting City Manager about the city of West Covina. I've seen several City Council meetings, and I've had the opportunity to virtually interact with the council. So I'm looking forward to the organization and my input. I have over 20 years of experience in private sector as well as public sector, ranging from banking, federal government, local government, as well as most recently, working as the Fiscal Services Director for School District in Whittier. So I have a deep understanding of finance, municipal operations, and then customer service. And I think that plays a key role in a city such as this one. I've seen the interactions with residents and staff, and I'm a big believer in having open-door policy. Reach out to me, feel free to contact me if you have any questions or concerns, and looking forward to working with everyone.
Great, okay. I know, Brian Gutierrez, I have a question, go ahead.
Yes, and I want to say, great job again, Mylan, you're on a roll. But I want to say, you know, we're so happy to have you for the city of West Covina, and, you know, all the residents who talk about fiscal responsibility and accountability and leadership, wow, your background in working for a major bank as an investment consultant, to being a financial analysis for the Drug Enforcement Administration, the DEA, to serving in Redondo Beach. So I commend your work, and we're proud to have you here for the great people of the city of West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and all the City Council, Ollie, want to say something?
Yes. I look forward to meeting you and shaking your hand. You're the one, we haven't gotten to speak directly yet, but I am really excited to get to work with you, and I know you're going to make a big difference here. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Thank you, thank you.
From me, then you have a lot of task.
Oh, really?
Okay, it sounds like you do finance, and it looks like you know a lot of grant, and we need a lot of grant. So maybe you can help us to write a grant, grant application, so we'll bring more grant. Another thing, I think, I haven't talked to you yet, but I think Acting City Manager told me you are very good at recruiting business, okay? And the city without business, they have no future, because business bring the service, bring the job, and bring the, okay, our tax dollars. So we need all the business, and we have one-year plan, three-years plan, five-year plan for our business development come to our city, and that's how our, how can we survive? So I think your task is how us, help us to bring business and help us to bring, okay, the business association that we are, we are through Chamber of Commerce, okay, West Covina Commerce, so hopefully, we can make this 4,000 business all united, okay, together under the city, so we can help them to survive and make more of the business and help them to recruit more business to West Covina. And there will be Assistant City Manager, based on what we talk, this would be your task, and I heard about you are well qualified to help us for that.
Absolutely, yes. I have a deep understanding of Tourism Marketing District, working in a beat city. I have a deep understanding of bringing businesses, communities together, and so transparency, open communication channels, and setting the right example. I think that plays a key role in recruiting businesses and residents to the city.
Very good, okay. So like we have another winner, okay? Hopefully, deliver what you say, and so we live happily after, okay? So, and anything you want to add, Acting City Manager?
I just want to echo that, you know, we did an extensive recruitment, did multiple interviews with the applicants, and we did hire the three best people out there, and they'll do, they're gonna be a great addition to our city and make our community even better.
Okay, I just want to give you guys a hand, and thank you so much. Let's give them a hand. Okay, appreciate you come to West Covina to serve. And don't forget, customer service is number one, and we have to serve our residents, okay? You have more?
One question.
Want to move on, okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, one question, just for Acting City Manager Mylan Makachik. What departments will Mahish be overseeing?
As soon as he's onboarded, we are gonna sit down with the two Assistant City Managers, the Directors, and we will outline and define the areas that they'll be specified to cover and report to.
And that includes the Department of, the Finance Department?
He will assist in overseeing the financial operations of the city as well.
Great.
Specifically, you know, the grants, the loans, the RFPs, TOT, those type things that we're deficient on right now.
And the Department, I mean, the Accounting Department in general, and different departments, right?
Correct.
That's what you told me, so I just want to make sure we're on the same.
Correct.
Okay, great. Yep, all good.
Okay, and we can move into consent calendar, no.
Mayor, Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I forgot to.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have first from Councilmember Gutierrez, second by our council, huh? Oh, which one? Ollie? So Councilman Kanto, okay, and roll call, please.
Councilman Kantoz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado is absent. Mayor Wu.
Let me think about this. Yes, welcome to West Covina.
Mayor passes four zero.
Four zero, thank you. Welcome to West Covina.
We'll get to your office now.
Now, we go to the public hearing on the, can we combine city attorney? Can we combine with the six, seven, eight, because they are all service district?
All right, so we'll give three staff reports, we'll be very clear on which ones they are. We can have one public hearing open. We do not have any cards, but we'll require three separate motions.
Okay, yeah, but we can combine the presentation together. So at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Lighting Maintenance District, okay, basically from, okay, and the six, seven, and eight. And when you come forward to the podium, please give your name and organization, any, okay, represent of the hearing, okay? And, okay, have our proper notice have been given?
Yes, it has, Mayor.
Okay, and in that this time, okay, I'm gonna announce, we're gonna open the public hearing, who will present the staff report?
City Attorney Michael Lloyd.
Yeah, let me show it to you, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Donna Segura of Harrison Associates will provide very brief reports for the three public hearing items. Thank you.
Good evening. So like I said, we'll be here for item six, seven, and eight, so very quickly, in the interest of time here. Item number six is for the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service District Charge, and real quick, a very high overview of the sewer districts that is, those funds are used for routine video inspections, jetting, cleaning, rehabilitation and replacement, and equipment procurement. The rate for this year is unchanged, it's the same as it has been over last year at least, it was eighty, which will be $82.02. The second one, item number seven, is for the Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. Just like the title says, it's mainly for maintaining the streetlights, street, excuse me, street trimming, and sidewalks. Here, we're going to have a, we're proposing a 2% increase over last year, which is $1.20 higher than the rate was last year. For a typical single-family home, that's $61.21. And finally, number eight is for project or neighborhood-specific lighting and landscape district, excuse me, landscape district number six, four, six, and seven, also for maintaining landscape, lighting, rubbish removal, graffiti removal. And we are not, we are already collecting the maximum amount allowed in these three districts, so there's no increase proposed over last year.
So, very good. And any Councilmember has any question? If not, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and do we have any audience want to speak on this item, six, seven, eight? No, none? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring back to council, okay, discussion. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, we are, so we have a motion approved, okay, moved by Councilman Kanto, and second by Councilwoman Diaz. Roll call, please.
For the sewer, is that for the sewer?
Yes.
That is for the sewer.
You have to read each one.
Allow me a moment.
Number six.
All right, so I'm going to read the resolution, number 202560, a resolution of the City Council of the city of West Covina, California, approving the sewer service charges to be collected on the fiscal year 2025-2026 tax roll. The second one?
No, we'll go one by one. And have been moved by, okay, Councilman Kanto, and second by Diaz. And roll call, please.
I have those. Councilman Kantoz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilman Gutierrez. Mayor Protem.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado is absent, and Mayor Wu.
Aye, and approve four zero. Okay, then we go to number seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Number seven.
Number seven, resolution number 25-61, a resolution of the City Council of the city of West Covina, California, confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2025-2026
twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six for Landscape Maintenance District number four. And resolution number twenty-five sixty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six for Landscape Maintenance District number six. And a resolution number twenty-five sixty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Western California, confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six for Landscape Maintenance District number seven.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second.
Okay, and so, roll call, please.
Councilman Kontos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado is absent. Mayor Wu.
Aye, and approve four zero, number eight, please.
Number.
Do I have, number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight, number eight. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. You have to read it.
I'm going to read all three of them.
No, just number eight.
Last one.
The last one, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, resolution number twenty-two-five dash six-three, again, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six for Landscape Maintenance District number seven.
Okay, roll call, please.
What's number eight?
I don't have a number eight.
It's the number eight, yeah. I don't have a number eight.
Number eight, right?
It's number five, no?
Number eight, number five is already approved, number is a consent calendar, it's number eight.
I don't think you did number six.
I think we did six and seven.
Lighting and maintenance.
So number eight.
We have a number eight?
Yeah, we have a number eight right here.
Mine is, mine is.
Just a moment.
Yeah.
There's no updated agenda in here.
Just reviewing back at the notes, it looks like Councilmember Gutierrez read the item number eight, so we're going back to item number seven as reflected in the packet that's at the dais.
So it's a number what?
So we're looking at item number seven, the.
We approved the number seven already?
So we made a mistake.
What was read was item number eight.
So, so that was number eight.
That was number eight, so now we're at number seven.
Okay, okay, we did approve the number eight, so now we didn't approve number seven.
Correct.
Read the number seven, please.
Absolutely. Resolution number twenty, twenty-two-five fifty-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, confirming the diagram and assessment for the citywide lighting and maintenance district for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Roll call vote.
Yeah, we, do we have, we have a first and second already, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, roll call, please.
Your roll call vote, Councilman Kontos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lleti Lopez Viado is absent. And Mayor Wu.
Aye, and approve four zero.
Correct.
We move to the action by the city council, do city council have any requests or comment? So we can go back.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have seven? Just kidding, just one.
I have twenty.
I don't mind, I have a, I have a number.
Just have one.
Because residents waiting for you guy.
I just have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to ask either, either Acting City Manager or Assistant City Manager, who has a text of it, please to read it, please, and then I'll explain.
In light of plans by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors to amend its ordinance pertaining to oversized vehicles as set forth in Los Angeles County Code Section fifteen point sixty-four point zero seven five to expand its ban of RVs and other parking of oversized vehicles from extended parking on streets in unincorporated parts of the county to expand to East Los Angeles, I would like to ask that the council ask the county to include unincorporated county areas that border West Covina. To ensure that we are not too late by the time this matter comes up for approval, I ask that this item to be agendized for the first regular council meeting in September of twenty-twenty-five.
So, Mr. Mayor, apparently the county has parking restrictions on oversized vehicles that are called non-conforming vehicles. And so since they're doing one for East LA anyway, and we have issues of parking along our border with unincorporated areas, I wanted to ask that we ask the city, the Board of Supervisors to add West Covina in that amendment so that way we are included with their part, with the new, with the expansion of the parking restrictions.
Make our own.
Yeah, I think we should make our own. We have our co-enforcement and the public safety and we should, because the reason is this, county cannot come to our jurisdictions.
It's not ours, but we're asking them.
I understand, but my point is, they might park into our city because if they cannot park in the county area, they possible will trample into our community. So our co-enforcement should cite them, make sure they don't park into our city.
Are you asking to have a similar policy that LA County is creating for the city of West Covina?
Well, just more with the border that we, that they don't park along our border.
Then we can enforce it, then.
No, not if it's on the county side, we can't.
But in our side, we have our public safety to enforce.
Right, so I was wanting to see if, if they were to just also, just that, that border area around the area that, that, that they also restrict parking, so that way there's no parking along, anywhere along our border. That was, that was.
If they are talking about, talking about the county area, if that county area, they need to enforce in the county area.
Yeah, that includes West Covina.
They don't have a parking restriction right now, they are allowing parking right in those areas. So then there's a whole line of, of vehicles.
I think it's okay, and let's look into it, I think, I'm going to second it, okay?